Before we call this meeting to order, I'd like to read a declaration by our governor. On March 13th, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16th, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's special meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Three trustees will participate in person for this meeting: myself, Conrad Heed, Mr. Barr, Mr. Hornsby, Dr. Diane Patrick, Ms. Teresa Ayala, Mr. Greenhill, and Dr. Gweller Morrison will participate via video conference or telephonically. We'll now call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees of May 12, 2021, to order. And I'll turn this over to... Oh, public comment? Is there any public comment? There is no public comment. Then I'll turn this over to Carol Bracken.
Good afternoon.
And this will be the canvassing the results of the May 1st, 2021 Board of Trustees elections for Districts 1, 2, 3, and 5.
Good afternoon, President Heed, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Gia Venini. The Board of Trustees has been assembled today pursuant to the requirements of Chapter 67 of the Texas Election Code to sit as the canvassing authority for Tarrant County College District to conduct a canvas of the precinct returns from the general and special elections held on May 1st, 2021 for the Districts 1, 2, 3, and 5 trustee positions on the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees. On Monday, May 10th, 2021, the Elections Office of Tarrant County provided the final tabulation of the votes cast in those elections to Mr. Reginald Gates in his capacity as the General Custodian of Election Records for the District, and he previously provided each of you with a copy of those results. Another copy is in the folders provided to you, and we will now review them together. If you would please turn to the page that's marked "Cumulative Report," beginning with Tarrant County College Board of Trustees, Precinct or District 1. The candidates were Teresa M. Ayala; her total vote count was 9,891. Jeremy Sistos; his total vote count was 2,825, for a total vote of 12,716. In District 2, choices were Conrad Heed, vote count 9,139; Shannon Wood, vote count 18,169, for a total vote count of 27,308. In District 3, the first choice was Steven Chaco, vote count 3,775; Jeannie DeKine, vote count 11,048; total vote count 14,823. In District 5, for the unexpired term, there were three candidates: Sheri R. McCullough, vote count 7,656; Leonard Hornsby, 6,477; and Kristy Clanton, 6,459, for a total vote count of 20,592. If you agree with the accuracy of the tabulation, your task now is to certify that by motion.
I'll ask the Board for a motion, sitting as the canvassing authority for Tarrant County College District, that we certify the accuracy of the tabulation of the vote prepared by Tarrant County for the May 1st, 2021 elections in District 1, 2, 3, and 5 for positions on the Board of Trustees for Tarrant County College District. May I have a motion?
I shall move, Diane Patrick.
I second, Gwen Morrison.
A motion by Dr. Patrick, and a second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Staff has prepared a proposed form of certification of trustee election, a copy of which is also in your folder, to certify the accuracy of the tabulation and to recommend to the Board of Trustees that it enact a resolution and order to declare winners for each of these elections. The certification provides as follows. "Tarrant County College District canvassing authority certification of trustee elections. We, the undersigned, sitting as the canvassing authority for the Tarrant County College District, have examined the canvassing documents provided by the Tarrant County Elections Office subsequent to the Board of Trustees election on May 1st, 2021. These documents show the following results. District 1, Teresa Ayala, 9,891 votes; Jeremy Sistos, 2,825 votes; total, 12,716. District 2, Conrad Heed, vote count 9,139; Shannon Wood, vote count 18,169, for a total vote count of 27,308. In District 3, the first choice was Steven Chaco, vote count 3,775; Jeannie DeKine, vote count 11,048; total vote count 14,823. In District 5, for the unexpired term, there were three candidates: Sheri R. McCullough, vote count 7,656; Leonard Hornsby, 6,477; and Kristy Clanton, 6,459, for a total vote count of 20,592. If you agree with the accuracy of the tabulation, your task now is to certify that by motion."
Okay. May I have a motion that the Board, sitting as the canvassing authority for Tarrant County College District, adopt the proposed certification of trustee election to certify the accuracy of the tabulation and to recommend to the Board of Trustees that it enact a resolution and order to declare winners for each of these elections. The certification provides as follows. "Tarrant County College District canvassing authority certification of trustee elections. We, the undersigned, sitting as the canvassing authority for the Tarrant County College District, have examined the canvassing documents provided by the Tarrant County Elections Office subsequent to the Board of Trustees election on May 1st, 2021. These documents show the following results. District 1, Teresa Ayala, 9,891 votes; Jeremy Sistos, 2,825 votes; total, 12,716. District 2, Conrad Heed, vote count 9,139; Shannon Wood, vote count 18,169, for a total vote count of 27,308. In District 3, the first choice was Steven Chaco, vote count 3,775; Jeannie DeKine, vote count 11,048; total vote count 14,823. In District 5, for the unexpired term, there were three candidates: Sheri R. McCullough, vote count 7,656; Leonard Hornsby, 6,477; and Kristy Clanton, 6,459, for a total vote count of 20,592. If you agree with the accuracy of the tabulation, your task now is to certify that by motion." Okay. May I have a motion that the Board, sitting as the canvassing authority for Tarrant County College District, adopt the proposed certification of trustee election to certify the accuracy of the tabulation of the vote prepared by Tarrant County and to recommend to the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District that it enact a resolution and order to declare winners for each of these elections. The certification provides as follows. "Tarrant County College District canvassing authority certification of trustee elections. We, the undersigned, sitting as the canvassing authority for the Tarrant County College District, have examined the canvassing documents provided by the Tarrant County Elections Office subsequent to the Board of Trustees election on May 1st, 2021. These documents show the following results. District 1, Teresa Ayala, 9,891 votes; Jeremy Sistos, 2,825 votes; total, 12,716. District 2, Conrad Heed, vote count 9,139; Shannon Wood, vote count 18,169, for a total vote count of 27,308. In District 3, the first choice was Steven Chaco, vote count 3,775; Jeannie DeKine, vote count 11,048; total vote count 14,823. In District 5, for the unexpired term, there were three candidates: Sheri R. McCullough, vote count 7,656; Leonard Hornsby, 6,477; and Kristy Clanton, 6,459, for a total vote count of 20,592. If you agree with the accuracy of the tabulation, your task now is to certify that by motion." I'll ask the Board for a motion, sitting as the canvassing authority for Tarrant County College District, that we certify the accuracy of the tabulation of the vote prepared by Tarrant County for the May 1st, 2021 elections in District 1, 2, 3, and 5 for positions on the Board of Trustees for Tarrant County College District. May I have a motion?
I shall move, Diane Patrick.
I second, Gwen Morrison.
A motion by Dr. Patrick, and a second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Staff has prepared a proposed form of certification of trustee election, a copy of which is also in your folder, to certify the accuracy of the tabulation and to recommend to the Board of Trustees that it enact a resolution and order to declare winners for each of these elections. The certification provides as follows. "Tarrant County College District canvassing authority certification of trustee elections. We, the undersigned, sitting as the canvassing authority for the Tarrant County College District, have examined the canvassing documents provided by the Tarrant County Elections Office subsequent to the Board of Trustees election on May 1st, 2021. These documents show the following results. District 1, Teresa Ayala, 9,891 votes; Jeremy Sistos, 2,825 votes; total, 12,716. District 2, Conrad Heed, vote count 9,139; Shannon Wood, vote count 18,169, for a total vote count of 27,308. In District 3, the first choice was Steven Chaco, vote count 3,775; Jeannie DeKine, vote count 11,048; total vote count 14,823. In District 5, for the unexpired term, there were three candidates: Sheri R. McCullough, vote count 7,656; Leonard Hornsby, 6,477; and Kristy Clanton, 6,459, for a total vote count of 20,592. If you agree with the accuracy of the tabulation, your task now is to certify that by motion."
I'll ask the Board for a motion, sitting as the canvassing authority for Tarrant County College District, that we certify the accuracy of the tabulation of the vote prepared by Tarrant County for the May 1st, 2021 elections in District 1, 2, 3, and 5 for positions on the Board of Trustees for Tarrant County College District. May I have a motion?
I shall move, Diane Patrick.
I second, Gwen Morrison.
A motion by Dr. Patrick, and a second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Staff has prepared a proposed form of certification of trustee election, a copy of which is also in your folder, to certify the accuracy of the tabulation and to recommend to the Board of Trustees that it enact a resolution and order to declare winners for each of these elections. The certification provides as follows. "Tarrant County College District canvassing authority certification of trustee elections. We, the undersigned, sitting as the canvassing authority for the Tarrant County College District, have examined the canvassing documents provided by the Tarrant County Elections Office subsequent to the Board of Trustees election on May 1st, 2021. These documents show the following results. District 1, Teresa Ayala, 9,891 votes; Jeremy Sistos, 2,825 votes; total, 12,716. District 2, Conrad Heed, vote count 9,139; Shannon Wood, vote count 18,169, total, 27,308. District 3, Steven Chaco, 3,775 votes; Jeannie DeKine, 11,048 votes; total, 14,823. District 5, Sheri McCullough, 7,656 votes; Leonard Hornsby, 6,477 votes; Kristy Clanton, 6,459 votes; total, 20,592. Total votes cast, 75,439. We hereby certify the accuracy of the totals given above and do recommend to the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees that it enact a resolution and order to declare Teresa Ayala for District 1, Shannon Wood for District 2, Jeannie DeKine for District 3, and Leonard Hornsby for District 5, elected as members of the Board of Trustees. Signed this 12th day of May, 2021, and then signed by all of the trustees."
May I now have a motion that the Board, sitting...
If you approve this form of certification, your task now is to approve it by motion.
Okay. May I have a motion that the Board, sitting as the canvassing authority for Tarrant County College District, adopt the proposed certification of trustee election to certify the accuracy of the tabulation of the vote prepared by Tarrant County and to recommend to the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District that it enact a resolution and order to declare the winners for each of these elections.
I shall move.
A motion by Mr. Barr, and a second by Dr. Morrison?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you. We will ask that each of you execute a single copy of the certification after the meeting. It will be submitted to Mr. Gates for preservation in the district's election register. That will complete the canvas of the results of the May 1st, 2021 election. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the record, could you please elaborate on the District 5 situation because it's somewhat unusual?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. McCullough originally withdrew from the race prior to May the 1st. However, her withdrawal was not timely. She had to have withdrawn by March the 5th. She did not withdraw until April the 2nd. Therefore, it's considered not a timely withdrawal, and according to the election code, if a withdrawal is not timely, it is as if it never occurred. Therefore, she was still on the ballot as of May the 1st. However, she subsequently withdrew from the runoff. A copy of that certification has been provided to each of you and also to Tarrant County. As a result, the election code further provides that in those circumstances, the second person in the runoff automatically moves up and is considered automatically elected.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Then, item 5, we do not have a closed session?
We do.
We do have a closed session, okay? Then we'll briefly adjourn and then reconvene in a closed session. We'll take a minute break.
6,459 votes; total, 20,592. Total votes cast, 75,439. We hereby certify the accuracy of the totals given above and do recommend to the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees that it enact a resolution and order to declare Teresa Ayala for District 1, Shannon Wood for District 2, Jeannie DeKine for District 3, and Leonard Hornsby for District 5, elected as members of the Board of Trustees. Signed this 12th day of May, 2021, and then signed by all of the trustees.
May I now have a motion that the board, sitting...
If you approve this form of certification, your task now is to approve it by motion.
Okay. May I have a motion that the board, sitting as the canvassing authority for Tarrant County College District, adopt the proposed certification of trustee election to certify the accuracy of the tabulation of the vote prepared by Tarrant County and to recommend to the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District that it enact a resolution and order to declare the winners for each of these elections.
I so move.
A motion by Mr. Barr and a second by Dr. Morrison?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you. We will ask that each of you execute a single copy of the certification after the meeting. It will be submitted to Mr. Gates for preservation in the district's election register. That will complete the canvas of the results of the May 1st, 2021 election. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the record, could you please elaborate on the District 5 situation, because it's somewhat unusual?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. McCullough originally withdrew from the race prior to May 1st. However, her withdrawal was not timely. She had to have withdrawn by March 5th. She did not withdraw until April 2nd. Therefore, it's considered not a timely withdrawal, and according to the election code, if a withdrawal is not timely, it is as if it never occurred. Therefore, she was still on the ballot as of May 1st. However, she subsequently withdrew from the runoff. A copy of that certification has been provided to each of you and also to Tarrant County. As a result, the election code further provides that in those circumstances, the second person in the runoff automatically moves up and is considered automatically elected.
Any further questions, comments? Then, item 5, we do not have a closed session?
We do.
We do have a closed session, okay? Then we'll briefly adjourn and then reconvene in a closed session. We'll take a minute break.